... schools, Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Mr. LaFerla.
Here.
Mr. Kizier.
Present.
Dr. Ogres.
Present.
Ms. Riley.
Present.
Mr. Hanson.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
Present. Please join me in a moment of silence and then we will say the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we will have Dr. Bruckner lead us in "We Are Proud of Our Schools" and any introductions.
Thank you very much. We're not plugged in.
What would we do without you?
I think somebody else can plug this in.
We have several presentations tonight. Let me start with a student spotlight for tonight. We want to talk about all-state football. We are pleased to introduce to you a talented Thomas Jefferson High School sophomore.
Yes.
Who has demonstrated excellence as part of the football team this year. Cameron Baker, would you join me at the podium? Under the leadership and guidance of his parents and coaches, Cameron has excelled. As a result, he was named to the Iowa All-State Football Second Team in Class 4A as a defensive back. For earning this statewide honor, he is receiving our school district's highest recognition, a Student Star Award. You all probably noticed he was also City Football Player of the Year. We're so proud of him. Coach Brand Anderson and Cameron's parents, Clayton and Holly, are here tonight to support Cameron, and the coach might want to share a few thoughts, so we've invited him up.
All right, I guess what I just wanted to say about Cameron is, the first thing that's obvious when he steps on the football field is he's extremely talented, just naturally gifted. He's also very highly knowledgeable about football and very skilled. He's the most skilled player we have on our team. He was last year's freshman, he is this year. His natural skills, as well as his developed skills, all those things that are involved in playing football, besides just running fast and jumping high and being strong. The best thing about Cameron, though, for TJ football is his work ethic. Cameron does not rest on the fact that he's more talented than other guys on our team. He does not sit back and take it easy because he thinks he's going to start, whether he works hard anyway. He's the hardest worker on our team, and he's the most talented. That's a great combination to develop a good chemistry and a good culture within your program. When he performs like that every day at practice, all the other players have to step up to his level. It's not like they can see the guy over here who, while he doesn't work hard and he still gets to play, they see a guy who works hard no matter what his talent level is, and that allows him to perform at a higher level than other guys. And we're hoping, we're planning, that even after Cameron leaves the program once he graduates, that that culture that he helps create with the work ethic, regardless of talent level, helps things keep going on down the road, even the year or two here or there. Hopefully we don't have anybody a year or two where we don't have someone as talented as Cameron on the program. So I just want to thank Cameron, thank his parents for the work ethic that they instilled in him, and everything he's done to help our program develop to the point that it's so far.
So next year he'll be back again, and the year after that he'll be back again, and then we'll be watching him at college, and then on Sundays, right? Good job. I also want to tell you about two employees that we're very pleased to have with us tonight. First of all, Karen Hokum is a para educator at Crescent Elementary School, and she is our Support Staff Member of the Month. Karen, can you come up here? Then we'll talk about you.
Okay.
Okay. Here's what Karen's nominators said. Karen embodies what a para should be to the students in our school. She's kind and caring, firm but loving. Karen has worked as a one-on-one para with two different students in our school. However, her positive impact goes way beyond the classrooms in which she works. She's willing to offer an ice pack, smile, or hug of encouragement. Karen is genuinely concerned about the well-being of students, and she's quick to come to the aid of anyone in need of assistance. She rarely sits, as she's always up helping students do and finish their jobs, as well as making sure students are focused on learning. With the guidance of the speech teacher, she helps students practice the needed speech sounds. Karen has taken it upon herself to make sure that the new para has positive guidance and encouragement. As teachers at Crescent, we would not be able to do our jobs without her help. She goes above and beyond expectations consistently. She is supported here tonight by Crescent Principal Tracy Matthews, as well as her husband Rick, and the poor girl had to call me twice in order to find out, why is the superintendent calling me?
At home.
At home. So Karen, on behalf of the Board of Education, the Community Education Foundation, and all of our members of our schools, we give you our Support Staff Employee of the Month trophy, very heavy, and with help from the Community Education Foundation and Tisha's Restaurant, we want you to have a night out.
Oh.
Congratulations. And now I'd like to introduce Jamie Munt, who is a third-grade teacher from Roosevelt, and who is our Licensed Staff Member of the Month. Jamie. Yay! Jamie has been working in the Council of Schools at Roosevelt Elementary for two years. Here's what her nominators from our school said about her. Jamie Munt has been nominated for living our district mission for many reasons. Jamie is intelligent and is a great motivator. She possesses a high amount of energy, is friendly, patient, and full of compassion for all children. Jamie is always positive and has an upbeat attitude, even when things are tough. She's well-prepared for teaching and learning, and always works to improve and to further her knowledge level. We appreciate her positive outlook and how she builds positive relationships with students, staff, and families. Jamie is a member of the school's leadership team and volunteers her time to support students and student council. We are proud to nominate her for district-level honors. Jamie is supported here tonight by Roosevelt Principal Mark Schultz, a bunch of supporters, as well as her parents, Martha and Bob. Jamie, on behalf of all of those people, the school district, the Board of Education, the Community Education Foundation, and all of us, we want to give you this trophy, Licensed Staff Employee of the Month, and a night out at Tisha's. Congratulations. Thank you very much for honoring our teachers and para educators and our students. That's a really important thing that we do, to keep the faces of our employees and our students in front of you. Thanks. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Cameron, and Karen, and Jamie. Now we come to the point, let people move first. Yeah, just let them move a little bit. Okay, you bet. Okay, well, Martha's getting her water. We'll move to approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of our agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. Any modifications, questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we have the approval of the minutes of the work session of November 22nd, and regular meeting of November 22nd. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting on November 22nd.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on those? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and approval of the meeting minutes for November 22nd carries. Now we have the opportunity for members of the public to address the board regarding any agenda items or other matters of concern. Does anyone wish to speak to the board? All right, on to the superintendent's report. Student achievement, which is always first in our hearts.
It is very, very, very much at the top of our list. So first of all, we're going to start with Cory and the annual multicultural education report.
Good evening. We prepared some information for you in our packet about the various ways in which multiculturalism is an active part of our curriculum, all the way from pre-K through 12, as well as the specific building-level activities that go on in each of the buildings throughout the year to emphasize the importance of multiculturalism in our community. What we wanted to do tonight was bring you an opportunity to see what that looks like through a student's perspective, and how that actually hits the classroom. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you one of our very own teacher leaders, Erin Shoning, International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program Coordinator at Carter Lake Elementary and College View Elementary. And she has a special guest that she would like to introduce to us.
Thank you, Dr. Vorthman, and thanks for inviting us here tonight. I'm just going to be very brief up here and just kind of let you know that as we write our IB units of inquiry, we're always trying to look at things, not just through, you know, what's important here in Council of Iowa, but through that global lens. And so I'm going to introduce fourth-grade teacher at College View Elementary, Cassie Skolblich. She's going to share with you just very briefly what they are currently learning in their unit of inquiry, and then you'll get to hear from one of her students. So Cassie, come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Cassie. As an IB school, we try to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring students who create a better world through cultural understanding and respect. So to do this, we try to write our units through a global lens. In our current unit, we are studying how group differences can create challenges. So our social studies curriculum focuses on how and why the United States regions were developed, and cultural groups within those regions. Our unit not only addresses how settlement impacted Native American cultures within the Midwest, but also takes an in-depth look at the diverse perspectives from a variety of cultural groups. So today I have Mari Mans with me, and she is going to explain how she learned about culture through this unit of inquiry. You're a rock star.
In our How We Express Ourselves unit, we've been looking at Native American cultures and how they express themselves through art and legends. One of the concepts we are studying is perspective. We started this unit by looking at many team logos and reflecting how they made us feel, and how they might make other people feel. Some kids in my class didn't like the TJ Yellow Jackets because they are College View's rivalries. Looking at the Yellow Jackets made me feel proud because my dad works there. From there, we applied our knowledge about perspectives to the settlers moving in on Native American land. Settlers had different perspectives than Native Americans, and this impacted both cultures. I think it's important to learn about different cultures and to share cultures with the world. Otherwise, everybody would be the same. We learn about cultures so we can get to know others and to get along with them.
Thank you. Great job.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies.
She wants to be a link.
I was going to say, maybe we should send that class to Washington, and we'll talk about how we can all get along together and understand each other's perspectives. We have this little souvenir for you to take home as a reminder of when you came here. Except you have to help me turn it on. Oh, you're going to. This is the report on English language learners, and I am doing this as penance for the fact that I'm part of the ELL Administrators Academy, and my partner, Chantel Brandt, has been very sick for several days. She came to work today, and we told her she needed to go home because she didn't feel well. So she said, who will do my report? And we said, Martha and Cory. Cory's going to fill in anything I do wrong, like not know how to work the computer. So once a year, we come to you to talk to you about English learners, and you have some of this information, you have most of this information. This is our numbers as of today. The numbers in your packet were the official October 1st numbers, and it's increased by about six. We have 563 English learners that are officially counted in our population. Thirty-eight of those are newcomers. That means they came to us not speaking English at all, and you can see all of the level, emerging, progressing, proficient. There are 26 students in our district who have waived services. That means we don't want our child to receive English language services, for whatever reason. They still count in our number, 562, and they still have to take the assessment to prove that they're doing well. We have 12 English learner teachers and two bilingual paras. In addition to those students, that doesn't always tell the whole picture, because there are 315 students in our district that have met exit criteria. That means when they came to our country, and perhaps to our district, they were not able to speak English fluently. They have met the criteria to move into, to be exited from the program, but we think when we're talking about how many English learners we have in our district, we really shouldn't forget about these 315 kids, because they all have some challenges also. You can see the blue are the almost 20% that are in our elementary schools. The red is sixth- to eighth grade, the middle schools, and the orange is the high schools. So these are kids that we think are English learners, but they do so well on proficiency tests that they don't get to count as English learners anymore, which is really one of the contradictions of the whole testing system. If we help make them successful, they no longer are in the population to be counted. The assessment for last year changed to the ALPA 21, so it's the very first time we were able to use this system, and in this, we did not get the results as soon, neither we nor any school district in Iowa got results as soon as we hoped we could. There were 112 English learners who scored proficient on the ALPA 21 in March 2016. The following grade levels, as shown there, had the highest percentage of students scoring proficient. Third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade were the highest areas. In order to exit out of English ELL services, you not only have to score proficient on the ALPA 21, but you have to score proficient on the Iowa assessments. Chantel and I, as part of our Administrative Academy for English language learners, have done some things throughout the last year, and we continue to work on that this year. That's not necessarily a choice activity. Because we didn't meet one of the AMAOs five years in a row, we have to do this. It goes away at the end of this year because ESSA, E-S-S-A, the new no child left behind, doesn't require it. But we together attended the Our Kids Summer Conference, and we were very pleased to have several administrators with us and several teachers also. And that really started our conversation in administrative meetings, et cetera, about how we can better serve English learners. The Iowa Culture and Language Conference is another one that representatives from our school district attend. Chantel goes not only as an attendee, but she's also one of the co-hosts because she's in one of the larger schools leading the ELL program. Bloomer and Longfellow this year put on a parent panel during our last professional development meeting, where they invited five parents of English learners to have a panel at the Longfellow Auditorium before all of the staff from both of the schools. And the parents did a very, very nice job of talking about their appreciation of the services. They were very complimentary of how they were treated and the fact that they felt that our services were helping their children succeed. Chantel and I last year also did several home visits to children who live in families who are English learners. We visited their family. Oftentimes, we're invited to dinner, which we weren't able to stay for, but that's part of the academy that's trying to help us understand English learners in our district and do better. And because of conversation that we started over the course of summer, we brought to you last week, or we're bringing, last week, the Bilingual Community Liaison Position, which is a half-time position. We are looking for ways to get a grant to support the other half, to make it a full-time position, but this is the first time that we're going to have a person on staff whose goal will be to communicate and to engage those families more with our school district. I think that's my last slide. It is. I am not an expert on ELL, or English learners, or our services, but I would try to answer any questions you have, and if I can't answer them, Cory can.
Very nice. Questions? I guess I have some questions on some of the information provided in the packet.
Okay.
The, this number of students exited 2015, 2016, that was 120 greater students than had been in the past.
That's because the state requirements changed, and we had to exit them at a certain point. In the previous year, we follow very, very carefully what the state requirements are, and in that year, they changed, and we were not allowed to keep those children in the program. We get extra funding when they're in the program.
Have some of those come back, or are they completely out of the?
No, they're in our schools. They're just not in.
Are they, they're no longer in the program at all?
Yes.
But you would assume that we wouldn't have felt they were ready based on the number of each year before.
We can certainly try to serve them. We don't get any extra funding for any service we do for them. Part of this is a funding issue from the state, because they didn't want people to keep counting students if they didn't have to.
And then the students in the high schools that have the kind of low numbers proficient, I guess what do we do?
We.
Curious with students who are like, I'm a senior, I'm listed as emerging proficiency.
Two or three thoughts on that. First of all, we're concerned about that number. The high schools had the lowest number of kids that were proficient. We're concerned about that. We did, we changed something this year in that we put all of our English learner teachers at one school, so that the students could get academic credit as well as support. So two teachers are at Thomas Jefferson, and students from Abraham Lincoln go there for EL classes. A few students stay all day at Thomas Jefferson, even though they're Abraham Lincoln students. We thought that would be supportive. It didn't show in the data by having a larger number of kids exit the program. However, Chantel has informed me that it's also very, very difficult to get some high school students to take that test seriously. They have to take the test. A certain percentage of students have to take this. This is over and above any other test. It's, this year, the ALPA 21 tested all four areas, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, including the fact that students had to record answers to questions and send it away to be scored. At the high school level, there are some students that don't see any use to them from taking that very seriously, and Chantel did a yeoman's job of even chasing down some of them, who, they don't like to be categorized as special. They don't like to have to take special assessments. So that is, I'm not basing that on any facts, except that it was hard to get some of them to take the test and to take the test seriously. But we are looking at it. One of the reasons we moved the program to one school is because that way the students can get academic credit for their English language learner class, as opposed to if they don't have a person that's certified both in ELL and English, they have to take the ELL classes in elective, and they still have to take the graduation requirement, so. There's quite a few students at the high school level that have waived services. Many of them get to that level, and they would just prefer to be as normal as possible and to not have special classes during the day.
Regarding the students who waived the services, are those that we would say are not proficient at English, but for whatever reason, they're not taking any of the ELL classes?
At times, that is true. We would recommend, they have to sign a waiver form that, in which they understand that we are saying they should be in the class, but they're waiving them. We can't make them come. We also have to test them, which is why, they don't like to be tested. We have to get to 95% testing, and so Chantel was chasing some of them last year. What we want to tell them is just become proficient and exit, and then you don't ever have to take that test again. It's not a fun test. Being in the ELL Academy has been good for me. It really has. Our theme this year, All Our Kids, really grew out of some conversation related to this, and we've shared our video with state officials from English Language Learner, the Department of ELL, and they're pleased with our work and the fact that we're pushing forward. We're a little bit of a renegade. We are, at times, trying to go our own path instead of simply do what they tell us to do. One area in which that's true is that, there's such a long backstory, but the state is suggesting that all teachers that have anything to do with any English language learner should have to take eventually six modules, webinar-type things, electronically, and pass a test for each of those. We're fighting back. We've succeeded at this point in convincing the deputy director that not all teachers need to take that, and so Chantel and I are creating our own version that we can take bits and pieces of and use as we see fit. We simply have to convince the Department of ELL at the Department of Ed that ours is as good as theirs. So we're continuing to do that, because we don't want to have people have to spend hours and hours and hours taking a webinar that we don't think is helpful. Any other questions?
What is the difference between proficient and proficient in state of Iowa? Because I see that's two different levels.
Proficient in state of Iowa, Iowa makes up their rules on what it takes to be proficient, and they've said you have to be proficient on the ALPA 21, and you have to be proficient on the Iowa assessments. So that's our current goal, until it changes. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Cory.
Now the report on the Program of Studies.
Some of you can take this home and sell it tonight. Be out ahead of everybody else.
Board of Education, Dr. Bruckner, thank you for this opportunity to share a few things about our Program of Studies. Each of you have a copy in front of you, if you'd like to look at it at some point. It's a draft copy, but it's almost a final draft, ready to hit send tomorrow, so there's a few things that Dr. Vorthman and I are fine-tuning. But I did want to share that, you know, this document is the work of a lot of people. I could say a lot of names, but I just, I wanted to take a moment and publicly acknowledge Deb Goodman, who's our curriculum specialist in CTE. She's been very helpful. I'd also thank Secretary at Tucker Center, Beth Adams, for her support in the document, and then finally Juliana Pennings, who works with, she's new to our organization, but works with Diana Stravsky as a part of our communications. but works with Diana Stravsky as a part of our Communications Department. So she was very helpful. So thanks to all those people. So this, this evening, I just want to share three key highlights. I want to highlight some new courses that we're going to offer to students next year. I'd like to also take a moment and share some information about our Computer Science strand. And then finally, we've added some CE enrollment options for next year that I wanted to highlight. So two courses that we added this year by request, student requests as well as teacher requests are Drawing II and Painting II. You guys are familiar that we have Drawing and Painting in both high schools. And our teachers have been honoring independent studies as a part of those, but there seems to be an outcry from students and a need for that additional Drawing II and Painting II class. So we're excited about those new visual arts opportunities for our students. Robotics is a, is a big celebration, I think, in our district. We know how the robotics club has been very, very successful. And we've actually been approached for, for two years now from the teachers, talking about, hey, could we offer this as a course? And we had a couple of different meetings with the teachers, as well as Deb Goodman and Dr. Vorthman and myself, and we feel like the time is right. We're ready to develop that course and offer it to students. Of course, in support of the club, which we're all aware of the success and to build on that success, but also as a way to continue to build our engineering program. Students, you just say the word robotics and, you know, they raise two hands. So it's a way to get them excited about their learning and offer it as a co-curricular opportunity. So we're excited about that. College and Career Exploration, it's going to be offered. It's a CE course through Iowa Western. The PP stands for Potawatomi Promise Students. You may remember last year, we had added the Iowa Western Ready Class, and students have taken that, and it's been very, very successful as a part of their integrated three math class that they also take. But we, as we build the college and career culture, we felt there was a need to add that to the senior year as those students think about Iowa Western and what course, courses they want to study. I just want to take a minute, this is a, an email, and it's a testimony to the progress that we've made around college and career readiness using the Potawatomi Promise Students as a measurement. This comes from Bridget Watson. She's the Director of College Success Initiatives at Iowa Western. She's one of the people we partner with very closely for our Potawatomi students. I won't read the whole thing, but I just want to skim it because I think it gives you a sense as a board as to where we were, where we are, and where we're going. Council Bluffs team, I have to share one particularly important change we've seen through our end-of-the-year interviews and focus groups this year. Last year, as you may recall, a majority of the Cohort 1 Potawatomi Promise Students expressed their displeasure or even concern about lack of college readiness that they had received at high school. They mentioned that high school did not prepare them for the rigor and true expectations of college, and they needed more. This year, however, we are seeing a complete shift in that attitude. Students have mentioned in many different ways that they were prepared for college and they know the expectations. Although some may not have been successful in their courses, they are taking personal responsibility instead of placing blame on the high schools. And it goes on, and the last closing is, anyways, I'm, I'm not sure I'm clearly articulating my excitement and my pleasure and my pure happiness with the shift in mindset, but know that I'm thankful for all of you, your partnership, our partnership, and these students. You really are making a difference at CBA schools. So we've, that, that's a very powerful, it's one I'm going to keep because we've worked very, very hard on trying to develop that culture. And I always, when I, when I can, I share the, the powerful partnership between us and Iowa Western. It's a positive one for us and for our students, so. The other new course that'll be offered next year is Personal Health and Wellness. That's really a placeholder in the Program of Studies. We're in development of the curriculum right now. We're almost done with ninth grade, and then next will be sixth through eighth grade. And then more information for you, for you will come later. Each of you has a diagram that highlights the course opportunities that our students have in Council Bluff schools all around computer science. It's a, it's a strand worth celebrating. Three classes that are on the, on the document there are Computer Science 1, 2, and 3. One is introductory programming, but it is, it is a CE course that's offered through Iowa Western. Two and three, we're excited, both of those classes are not only offered as CE, but there's two different AP tests that students can take, and Computer Science 2 and Computer Science 3 will prepare them for those two different tests. Computer Science 2, it would be like an intermediate course, but again, as an AP offering, it's very rigorous. So we're excited about those opportunities for our students. And then finally, also on the document that you see there, we're offering two additional computer classes, computer programming classes, C++ and Java, as CE opportunities. And then finally, we worked with Iowa Western to allow what's termed EDD, or Engineering Design and Development, as a CE opportunity. And the reason that's important is what we're learning is, and this is good news, students are beginning to figure out that if I'm a junior or a senior and I have an option to take some classes, boy, it sure does make sense to take some CE options or some AP options, thinking ahead to post-secondary opportunities. So it's a shift in our culture, and we know that by adding that CE to the EDD, we'll be able to populate that at higher numbers. So that's an exciting shift in our culture. So really, we're.
Can I ask a question? On like this strand, since it's so nicely drawn out, how does this work into a full schedule for like a college prep at Iowa State? Where I'm, where I've got all my other core classes and the whole class load? I'm just curious.
How does it work?
Does it fit in perfectly where they have room for all these?
Well, maybe, maybe this slide will answer that question. So where is this all leading? Really, one of the things that we know we got to get better at is personalized counseling, personalized academic planning, a learning plan for our students. And we're moving towards that through a couple of ways. One, with our high school counselors and challenging them to have, especially our senior counselors, having those personalized conversations with families. We've challenged them to meet with every single senior family. That's a, that's a big challenge. That's difficult. They take some of their summertime to do that. But we can't just lean on, on only them. What we've learned is that we need to take this on as a system. And I attribute it to, I think about the work when Dr. Bertner came here and when we thought about our graduation rate, and it was, that was a big, a big thing we had to do. We realized that. So this is a big challenge. And what we learned through that is it couldn't just be Dr. Bertner or the senior counselor or the high school principal. Really, we had to take that on as a system. So what we want to do is we want to change, train all of our high school teachers and, I should have put this on there, and our eighth-grade teachers on a, on a platform that we're, we're looking at right now, where the teachers would have, the advisors would have individual conversations with those students that would start in eighth grade, that would, that would be a plan that would follow that student every year. Now, you might have heard about I Have a Plan. That was really kind of the state's first attempt at doing that. The truth is, is that most districts, ours included, it was pretty much a compliance issue where we would just, you know, we would comply and we'd sign off and say, you know, we've done this. What we're really trying to do is change the culture to where everybody has the knowledge that families need and that students need, knowledge about the Program of Studies, knowledge about Iowa Western, knowledge about our universities, and then have that constant conversation and keep coming back to it year in and year out. That will help individual students and that will help our system. And then related to that is also, I shared last time, John Hattie is a, a great researcher that's taught educators that one of the things that we could do a better job with is getting our teachers and our teacher leaders to invest more in the things that we do and really leaning on, he calls it teacher efficacy. And what research shows is that when teachers have efficacy, high levels of efficacy, the system grows and you have better student achievement, culture, and so forth. And so what we're trying to do is take things that are major, like the Program of Studies, use our teacher leaders to help us invest in this and, and spread the leadership wealth, so to speak.
We will be reaching out to families about now in eighth grade?
Yes. So the plan, I mean, we just had a training this week and, I'm just looking back at Cory because the, the good news is, is that we are in a great situation based on where the state's at. We're, we're ahead of the state in this, in this work. We have to put together a plan. We went with a whole team of people to, to hear firsthand what is required as a part of this. The good news is we're, we're ahead of them. But the plan is, yes, we would select this plat, platform. We're waiting on them because they're supposed to identify a platform for us. And we've narrowed it down to three quality platforms, but we don't want to pick one until they give us some direction. But as soon as they give us that direction, we're in a position to turn around, choose, choose the platform, and then figure out a training plan. This is really going to take us three to five years in terms of the whole development, but we're excited about, we're excited about where the state's moving because we're moving in the same direction. And we believe strongly that individual students will be so much more prepared and families will be more informed as a result of, of this training and these things we're going to do through advisement.
Jason, some of this comes out of the governor's push and the legislation. It's got four numbers. Four numbers. Ninety-two, seventy-four. What is it? Twenty-five, ninety-two? That, that said, it had a Section 1, Division 1, that talked about what schools had to do, and then a Division 2 that talked about how schools within the different community colleges across the state have to work together to be able to provide CE opportunities to all kids in the state. So Jason is right, and Council, Council Bluffs is, is ahead of that game. And there are more and more school districts and even some community colleges that are looking at Council Bluffs to know where we're going because I think Cory and Jason have been working with some other people to, to really outline that. We are ahead of the state. We're kind of waiting for them to give us the next directives so that we don't get too far ahead of them.
I mean, we just received an email today, and I took another phone call of other districts asking to visit and to talk to us about what we're doing because it was pretty clear in the room, just based on the questions that we heard compared to the questions we asked, that we're in really good shape. So, but Dr. Bertner's right, we're trying to find that balance. If we move too fast and then they change and give us some directives, then, you know, thinking about our teams, we've moved too far. Now we've wasted some time with training and then we're having to retrain, and that frustrates people in the system, so. But more to come on, on all of those things that Dr. Bertner mentioned because it's all integrated.
And all of which is related to a strategic plan that you set as my goal because you said you knew we could do it. So we're doing it. Twenty-three, ninety-two. Why can't I remember that? Two, three, ninety-two. I don't have a system.
Thank you. Any other questions at all? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Cory. Thanks, Jason.
Now, we are on our informational presentations. Are we going to go right to the audit report?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. Who's leading this?
I think that Dean, where did Dean go?
Dean disappeared.
Dean disappeared. We are ready for an audit report. Maybe he thought we were going to talk about him, so he left. Just for the public, the, the board met for an hour before this in a work session to be able to do some individual questions about our audit, but we're very pleased to be able to have a formal presentation. Briefly, we said?
Yes, it would be very briefly. I had a PowerPoint, but I don't see it up here.
Maybe that's Dean.
In Dean's left-hand pocket. But anyway, you, the board members have, have copies of, of the PowerPoint that we went through in the work room.
You can have mine.
No, I have a copy. If you guys have copies.
Public won't see it. Yeah, public won't see it. How does Dean? Hold on a second.
And now.
Hey, Dean, we're on the audit report now.
How was your nap?
Brian, go ahead and state your name for people at home.
Oh, yes. My name is Brian Green. I'm a partner with Sym Johnson, a public accounting firm over in Omaha. We've been working with the district for the last three years and happy to be here and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I should turn it over to Susan. She's heard this, this for the third time now, so hopefully I'm saying the same thing each of those three times. And again, I'll try not to bore you too much with too many details, but other things that we've talked about earlier this evening, if you have questions, again, please feel to bring them forward. Again, from an annual perspective, we, we like to meet with the Board of Education and, and provide the annual audit and, and the reports from there. The, the big thing to remember is that second bullet point up there. We plan and perform the audit. We can't look at every transaction, but we develop our risk models and, and take into account the different things and, and work through the audit with, with the help of management. And so we're happy to report that your auditor's report is an unmodified or clean opinion, a similar opinion you've had in, in past years. And again, we appreciate Dean Wilson's help and the, and the help of the staff through that process. Any new accounting policies, principles, standards that would have taken place during the year? We always bring those to the board's attention. This year, GASB-72 was brought on board, which requires you to record and disclose fair value information related to your investments. Not a major pronouncement for the district, certainly not to the level of GASB-68 was in previous years, but, but certainly something different than you've, you've been aware of in the past. No other really significant or unusual transactions to bring to the board's attention. And then certainly the bottom bullet point there, anything that management provides a man, judgment or accounting estimate in the financial statements. We spend a lot of time in those areas. We've bullet pointed three, three items there. We're happy to report that management's been consistent in recording those estimates with prior years, and they're in the appropriate places. From an audit adjustment perspective, again, as we mentioned earlier this evening, seven audit adjustments. Again, most of those we would characterize as getting the information in, in financial presentation components for GASB-34 audit statements. So a little different than the presentation you probably see throughout the year. So kind of massaging the numbers to get them in, in the right place. Again, nothing out of the ordinary or, or things that we would bring to your attention as, as major. Communication of significant matters, again, this would, would, we would bring up any issues that we had during the engagement, any disagreements with management, any consultations we had to have with others, other resources. Again, nothing, nothing on that line to report to the, to the board. You can see under other control, other internal control-related matters, we, we did note one significant deficiency over some Title I funding that was, or I guess, settled with, with an audit adjustment that moved some expenditures out of that bucket and, and brought to your attention. So again, nothing major there. Very consistent from a perspective of other federal award programs, lots of, of compliance requirements surrounding those types of items. And again, nothing out of the ordinary that we see there. As we mentioned earlier, some other suggestions, payroll processes here at the district for a district your size, quite a few manual processes still involved, and we'd encourage you to look at some, some ways to digitize that or, you know, maybe move towards a different methodology there. Other new accounting pronouncements coming down the road, there's some leases, project that's coming, coming down in the next few years, as well as look at the overall financial statements and some different things. I actually sit on a governmental, what is it? GASC Act, G-A-S-C, Government Accounting Standards Advisory Committee in New York. And I was out there last week, and some of the pronouncements that we're talking about is how readable are the financial statements? How easy are they for, for laypeople to read through them? And again, I'd encourage you to look at that MDNA section, but there's talk over revamping the, the whole financial statement presentation for folks. So we'll keep you apprised of that in the future, but that's several years down the The page references here go to the actual final audit report. And again, the clean opinion we mentioned before covers pages two and three of that audit report. Again, if you don't read any other information in the financial statements, that pages four through thirteen, those ten pages of management's discussion and analysis, does a very nice job of summarizing the year and some of the financial and statistical highlights. The financial statements in and of themselves, again, fairly lengthy. Some of the highlights of the government-wide financial statements, again, total assets in the district are approaching a quarter of a billion dollars, $247 million at the end of the fiscal year. Of that, capital assets, $139 million of those. So, so those are the major components of the assets. On the liability side of the balance sheet, debt in, in the district is about $70 million at the end of the year. And a big other liability that was brought onto the financial statement a year ago, the pension liability sits at $44 million. And we'll get to a couple of slides here in a moment. We'll get to a couple of slides here in a moment. Equity in the school district, $64.3 million. One of the key components of that, we look at the general fund and the unrestricted or unreserved component of that. Your solvency ratio a year ago was 10.4%, and this year it's declined to 8.77%. The state likes to see anywhere in a 5% to 10% range, so you're well within that range and pretty healthy, but a little bit of a negative trend line the last couple of years. Again, lots of other information as you move through the financial statements, budgetary comparison schedules, lots of information about the IPRs pension plan, and then again, the federal awards that you receive included in there as well. $8.6 million received from those federal awards, and we tested about 28, we tested programs at a price of about 28% of those federal awards this past year. Of that pension-related information, again, the key assumptions that IPRs has statewide, you see there, the main one there, that third bullet point, that seven-and-a-half percent rate of return. Again, at the end of the year, your portion of the liability is about $44 million. If over the near term and long term, average rate of return drops 1% from that seven-and-a-half percent, the district's liability today would be computed at $77 million. Conversely, if we have a little better return and it increases 1% to 8.5%, that liability drops to $16 million. So, obviously, those actuarial studies each year and changes in that can vary significantly on these assumptions. Typically, the assumptions don't change a whole lot year to year, and it takes some major changes to move those assumptions. Again, statewide, the IPRs plan is about 84%, 85% funded. In IPRs historical funding there, you can see 10 years ago, the district set aside 5.75% of an individual salary, and that has increased over the last 10 years to 8.93%. And our contributions to the program a year, or this year, was about $6 million. Again, on pension and comparisons across the states, how does Iowa's plan compare to some of these other states? These two graphs were taken from CNBC, but you can see down there Iowa is towards the bottom, which is good. The bottom of the left-hand side is positive. Three states currently have statewide pension plans that are over 100% funded. Iowa, again, about 85%. And you can see the top two, the bad states, Illinois, Kentucky, New Jersey, about 40% to 45% funded. So, overall, I think nationwide, the thought of a healthy plan is 80% funded, so Iowa, again, is above that, but on a downward trend, again, heading towards that. Again, the red bar along the right side, the right red line, related to promised benefits to employees of public institutions, and you can see that's a pretty steady, straight-up line nationwide. Not a whole lot of things done to retract benefits from participants. And the assets since about 2001 have not performed as well as historical assumptions would have thought, and you see the growing disparity between the promised benefits and the assets available pay for those. Again, to make the green bar catch up, either you need very positive earnings from investments or additional contributions by the employers and participants. A couple of graphs to finish up here, and again, I won't take up a lot more of your time. Total government fund revenues over the last five years, you can see increasing to the current year of about $131 million. During that same time period, government fund expenditures trending upward, $138 million over the last two years. The government fund expenditures have exceeded your government fund revenues. Specifically, your bond debt on a downward trend, $81 million, or $80 million five years ago, down to $72 million in 2016. During that same time period, general fund revenues increasing over the last five years, topping about $110 million this year. And your expenditures the last two years, again, slightly above general fund revenues, thus the declining solvency ratio that we mentioned earlier. And that's portrayed here with the general fund balance you had over the last five years, topping out in 2014. Federal awards back in 2012, and prior to that, there were some ara special government awards out there related to the Recovery Act and recession and coming out of that. Those have since ceased, but you can see over the last four years, a steady increase in federal awards. Yep, sorry?
The increase happens to be on the nutrition side. If you look at the educational side, we've dropped.
A lot of the nutrition, again, related to the number of students and the percentage of poverty and that sort of thing that really drives those nutrition numbers. Average tax levy rate per thousand over the last five years, you can see in 2012, about 18.5%, and that's dropped to just over $17, and been very consistent the last four years. No increases over the last five years in your tax levy. Enrollment, again, continues to go up, very positive. Your students' population continues to grow, and 2017, it's my understanding, it continues to creep up 92.50 or something like that in that neighborhood. Again, that's what, questions, comments, thoughts? You're bored of the monotone, tall accountant guy with no hair? Are we on TV?
Yes, yes.
Live.
Susan, anything that we didn't touch upon or want to bring up from previous meetings?
Just good to see an accountant with a sense of humor.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Again, thank you.
I appreciate the multiple meetings with us.
You bet. Not a problem. Thank you.
And now, we're on to the report on health services. While these two gentlemen just wait and wait and wait.
I know. I was gonna change it, but somebody to my left wouldn't let me, probably. When we wrote this agenda, we did not know that these gentlemen were going to be here. We thought we would be covering the classroom grants, and so, we did not have in our mind that we would make them sit through the whole meeting. That was not on purpose.
Oh, I went up when they were doing a fire. It was there like a month ago. I'll show you the pictures. It's just wonderful.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I will be short and simple and to the point, as always. Here to present our annual health services report. The three things that I'd like to cover that, to be consistent with last year's report, are our health staff, health services, and then the health clinic. We continue to use a quadrant model for our nurses and health associates. We have four nurses for the district, 10 health associates. You can see the quadrants up there. This is also in your packet. The nurses are assigned to Thomas Jefferson, Carter Lake, Abraham Lincoln, and Bloomer. Changes from this year since last year, we have a new nurse at Abraham Lincoln, Corona Kenny, and a new health associate at College View, Sunshine Gruber. They are both excellent additions. You have a chart in there with a bunch of numbers that talks about what our health associates and nurses do. As you know, every day, they're seeing kids that take medication, they're seeing kids for bumps and bruises along the way, they're administering specific medications, monitoring blood levels. They do a number of different things. You would be amazed at the work that they do. On average, this year, our health associates and nurses are seeing about 500 kids, a little over 500 kids a day are coming into their offices. So, they are very busy. They are also expected to communicate with the staff and students, communicate with the parents. They're talking to medical professionals when the kids come in or parents come in and bring new medications. If they have questions, they're calling directly to those medical professionals to find out what's going on. They also work with our public health offices. They work, we send in state reports. One example is vision screening, another could be the lead-blood testing for kindergartners. So, we're very busy. One of the things that we're trying to do, or that I'm trying to do, this year, we've increased their professional development. They were meeting four times a year. This year, we have six already scheduled, and there may be some other ones that come up. We've done first aid and CPR with them. They were all recertified in their visions screenings that they do with kids, which was, I was in and out of that, but it was interesting because we have machines that we've been using for years and years, these vision screening machines, and now they have cards and one of those things to cover your eyes. I'm not for sure what they're called, but one of the things to cover your eyes, and it's a lot simpler, a lot easier, and a lot more effective. Because we find with any machine, the calibrating them and making sure they're accurate is the tough part. One of the things we're also doing this year is because they're so busy in their schools, the nurses that are overseeing these, the health associates and overseeing the schools, they generally don't have time to get out of their building during the day and go helping those other buildings. And I knew that, and it would be hard to ask them to do that. So, we have a nurse who has sub for us in the past, so I asked her if she would be willing to come in at the end of each trimester and go visit our four schools one day, go spend one day in each of our four schools as a nurse, so that nurse can get out of that building and go to her other buildings and work with those staff in the other buildings. That's been, we've done it once already this year. It's been really beneficial. I think it's just because it's easy to talk on the phone and say, "This is what you should do," but actually going out into a building and seeing it and helping them work through it, it's been really beneficial. So, we'll continue to do that. These are the numbers that we talked about. These are the measures that we were using before I came, and will continue to use these measures. In comparing from last year to this year, there's not anything alarming as far as changing. The numbers stay relatively consistent. You know, I've been here, this is my second year. So, the last two years, the numbers are relatively consistent. There may be a swing here and there. Last slide, I want to talk a little bit about the health center. The All Care Health Center continues to be at Carter Lake. They're there on Mondays and Wednesdays for a few hours. We met with, Dr. Bruckner and I met with All Care at the beginning. We met with them last year, and there was some transition last year. They're trying to bring in more people. The Carter Lake community doesn't have a health center in that community. So, one of the things that they've asked us for this year, it was typically Council Bluffs, students and families could go there. One of the things they asked us this year was if they could have some of their existing patients come. We didn't want it to be a walk-in clinic just because, for the safety of kids and coming into the building. So, we have allowed them to, if they have scheduled appointments and somebody who lives in that community, we have allowed them to be able to be seen at the Carter Lake Clinic. We get a list of those people as they come in. When they come in, they check in, and then we have a system where the secretary at Carter Lake calls down. If you've all seen, the clinic is down the hallway. She calls down to the clinic to say, "Mr. so-and-so or Mrs. so-and-so is here for their appointment," and that way, we make sure that they're not in the hallways, that they're not, they don't have contact with our students. So, it's an effort to be good partners with All Care because we think that the clinic is really valuable there, and to try to increase the numbers that they're seeing. Quite honestly, I asked them just their numbers of appointments so far this year, and it is astonishingly low, but it's new, so we'll see if it increases. Do you have any questions for me?
I do have a question on the days when we have the substitute nurse coming in. Do we feel we should have more access for them to collaborate with the health associates?
We, right now, during our professional development time, our job-alike, we very, we spend very little time. We give them the basics, I give them the basics, we go over anything, we ask health departments to share. So, they have time to collaborate then. So, this is really time to go and see how it's working in the building. We'll see. I need to meet with the nurses to see how it works. I'm more concerned, quite honestly, I'm more concerned with if the health associates think that it's valuable that the nurses are coming. So, as we do it a couple of times this year, we'll see if it is something we need to increase.
Do you have an idea how many students All Care is seeing on those two days?
I asked them, they gave me the specific numbers of people that have appointments that are coming in. I asked them the number of students or families that are walking in, because generally, the students or families of our students are walk-ins, and I haven't gotten that, they haven't given me that number. So, at this point, I don't know.
Does a health associate in that building cooperate with them? Is that they cover?
There's actually a nurse at Carter Lake, and so, the benefit of it is, is if there's kids who are seen by the nurse and they have a fever, they have something going on, they can immediately say to a parent, we have, if it's a time when the clinic is open, they can walk right into that clinic and, you know, say if it's strep throat or an ear infection, they can get the medication that's needed.
Good.
Are the nurses, do they work when we're in school and they're off in the summer?
Correct.
Okay. I have a vision. It's just an idea, but I'm curious if at some point, we can get our healthcare team involved at the middle school and high school level, at either registration or immediately afterwards, and work with our nurses and do sports, physicals, so that we capture those kids at that time, and it's onsite, it's with our nurses. You'll need a provider, unfortunately, to sign the document and examine them, but to have that team there accomplishing and gathering all those kids and getting everything done, that may get more kids involved in activities.
I think our-
Utilizing the resources that we have.
And I think our nurses are willing to go above and beyond, so.
Just an idea. I don't know where to go with it, but I think that would be awesome.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hamilton? Okay. Now, we come to the classroom grant recipients portion of the meeting.
We do.
Report.
Good evening. I'm going to ask my colleague, Pichla Quana, to present this PowerPoint for you, but I will be here as well, and we're just very pleased, as a member of the board, to have the Community Education Foundation present its annual classroom grant report to you.
Thank you, Diane. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for allowing us to come here and present a nice check to the school board. I have with me tonight, and I'm really pleased that he was able to be here with me, Jeff Coats, he's our vice president of our Council Bluffs Community Education Foundation Board. He's going to help me with the presentation, and so, I'd like to take just real brief and go through this pretty quickly. We had 50 grants awarded this year. We received 60 in total. They asked for $45,338. We raised $35,014, and we're awarding all of that to the 50 grantees. We always want to do more, and hopefully, next year, we'll do even better. This year, obviously, was better than last year. I think it was 22 grants more than we did last year, and about $15,000 in increased funding. It's not to the level we want it, but it's better than it was last year. We're really pleased to be able to present this to you tonight because it's a combination of things. Employees from the district have contributed to this process. Local businesses and organizations and foundations have helped us, and we also have a match grant from the Iowa West Foundation that matches all the local business and organizations that contribute to this process. We gave 30 grants to the elementary schools, four grants to the middle schools that were approved. approved, 16 grants to the high schools. You can see all these listed here. I think maybe they're in your packets of information. But these are the schools and the grants that are awarded, the teachers and the amounts. I'll go through those real quickly. I'm not going to read those to you. You can see those. But we're really excited that we were able to provide this many grants again this year. We do have a grant award reception that's this Thursday, December 15th at 4:00 PM at Wilson Middle School Media Center. And we invite all of you to attend if you're able to do so. I know that the teachers would be very pleased to see you and obviously, we would be happy to have you there as well. That's truly the end of our presentation, except for, I do have this huge check that we wanted to present to you tonight.
Oh, careful.
Whoa, safe.
$35,014. We'll stand behind you.
Stand up then.
We invite you to stand with us.
Okay. Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Perfect.
Everybody in?
Yep.
Mr. Grove is not in front of that TV screen.
What do we need? Where are we going? Where are we going? This way?
Yeah, perfect, okay.
Okay, there we go.
You know, my husband always did this joke. A little more to the left.
Everybody?
One more second. We're not perfectionists or anything, are we? Dean's wandering around, he thinks we're going to give it to him.
He's buzzing.
Excellent, guys, thank you.
Thank you very much. Maybe in the corner.
I'd like to ask Jeff to say a few words just-
So the only thing I'd add is that I've had the opportunity to review the packets the past couple of years. The teachers really put a lot of efforts into these. And I wish we could have given the grants to all of them. But I really feel like they've requested things that are really helpful for the kids. So it's been a fun project to be a part of, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coats and Ms. Laquana. We appreciate all your work for the schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Now, a report on early retirement and early notification incentives.
You all know Toby. Toby couldn't be here for her personnel report, so we made up a report for her to give you. And she came with gifts. The packages that you got today were from the HR department. They are examples of some of the Council Bluffs loot swag that we give people when we're trying to convince them that they should come work for us, with us.
I hope you liked me just a little bit to share with you some of the things that we share, we use as recruiting tools. And we have learned that the one way to get people to remember the Council Bluffs School District is, is that's part of the recruiting method, that they like to see the little trinkets and that kind of draws them in. It's kind of, kind of like glossy ads and great TV ads. But anyway, just wanted to give you a quick update on the two incentives that we have out there right now from Human Resources. One is the early notification incentive. And just a quick reminder, what the early notification incentive is, is that's the ability for teachers to help us out in Human Resources in the school district and let us know ahead of time that they're going to be leaving us at the end of the school year. This incentive program allows them, for $1,000, they have to be an employee for three years. So, but that helps us to get ahead of the game in hiring, get those high-quality employees that are out there before they're grabbed up by another school district. So that's what we're really looking for, is the ability to give us the opportunity to get those new graduates and to get all the good people that are in the area. So right now though, we have zero people that have applied for this program. So.
Toby and I talked about this today. We're not sure that everybody really noticed this in light of noticing the other ones. So Toby's going to put a note out to kind of remind people, they can tell us by Friday if they're interested.
Is this deadline similar to previous years that we've done this?
And then the other one, the other program we currently have is the voluntary early retirement plan. And this is one that kind of garnered a lot more attention right now. You had to be an employee for 10 years, be age 55. So, and then you must apply by this Friday as well. And they have to retire no later than June 30th of 2017, which is be the end of our contract year this year. And currently, we have 21 applicants in this pool. So if you've looked at our job postings, what this also helps us do is get to early recruiting. However, and so we posted many of those jobs that we know will be hard to fill vacancies that we deem to need at this time. That doesn't mean we will or won't, but right now, that's what we're looking at for the greatest need in hiring and some of the more difficult ones that we have at this time. So we have until, like I said, a few more days for people to turn in applications. However, the period for these 21 applicants to rescind their application has passed. So these people will remain. That does not mean we won't get a few more by the end of the week.
Because they apply, we accept that, correct?
If they meet the criteria, yes.
I'm just looking at the list and there is a significant amount of, yes, talent and many years of experience, 20, 30-plus years. And it's, they're going to be big shoes to fill.
They absolutely will be. And part of that is doing it at this time of year, it allows us again, like the other plan, to reach out and get the talent that is in the area. And even, you know, we post also, not only just in the metro area here, but also throughout all of Iowa, so we can bring in and recruit that talent. And when we plan to go to career fairs, recruitment fairs at universities, diversity fairs, that helps us too, to know what we're looking for, to replace these people.
Very good.
I'm going to turn it over to Dean to give you a little bit of where we are financially with this program.
So when I added up the 21, actually it's, Virginia is one, which would be out of the nutrition fund, then we have the other 20. Right now, we're spending roughly almost $2 million on those salaries. If we would replace those same folks with lane one and two employees, we'd spend anywhere from about $1,250,000, about 1.3. So the savings would be roughly $700,000 in savings by going to this program. If you look at the 700,000, that's roughly eight to 10 teachers. And we know we're going to have to cut costs. So here's 700,000 right here that we can do. We're going to have to cut more than that, but this is a good, a good start without affecting anybody's direct job. One of the, I know Bill has brought up the point before where he says, you know, we're spending more, we would spend about $934,000 to save this 700,000. I can tell you as a bean counter, if you just looked at it that way, you would say, well, that doesn't make, make any sense. The problem is, is that the rules that we have set up, we have all these buckets. One is the management fund, one is the general fund, and they all have, they both have their own set of rules. And in order to play the game, in order to get spending authority, we have to reduce costs in the general fund by increasing costs in the management fund. And this is typically what school districts go through when they go through these kinds of programs. It's the way that it's set up by the state and that's the rules that we're following. And this is how the numbers are coming out.
I think that what the district has been trying to do over the last three or four years is we've been saying loudly that we understand there are some financial struggles that we have and that they will probably increase in the near future. But we want to do some things that are creative that keep us moving forward. You can't, you cannot make the progress we've made in the last decade and then all of a sudden, put it in a screeching halt. So Dean's been very good about saying, you got to find some cuts where you can make them. And so that's what we're going to try to do. If there are any of these positions that we don't have to fill, we won't fill them. However, we know we may have some other needs and we may substitute some other needs. But we, I hope this says to you as a board and to our community that we are looking for ways to be fiscally responsible and still keep our momentum moving forward.
As a board member, I look at it as being very fiscally responsible, but I also look at it as our veteran teachers and other administrators that are retiring are also looking at it as, I mean, I can't speak on their behalf, but it seems like it's a very pleasurable opportunity to take advantage of at this point and to end their career on a positive note.
I think to that point, that also helps us in a recruiting tool. It's a nice work. And we like that. We like our employees, they're our best recruiters out there. And so this is where they can say, you know, this is how we honor those people. And this year, we're able to do that. We won't be able to all years, but I think it's a nice, a nice way to have them be kind of our ambassadors to the world as well.
Toby came into a meeting this morning and I will not name the position that she said, but she was looking at applicants and she said, wow, everybody wants to be a, and she named the position. So we have garnered some attention to the fact that we have some openings, which is what we wanted to do, so. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you both. Now we're on to the resolutions portion of the meeting. First resolution would be to move to accept the audit report as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Excellent, we have first and a second. Any discussion?
I would like to thank Mr. Wilson as well as the auditors for, Mr. Wilson for maintaining such books that there were no major findings in our audit this year.
Thank you.
Great job, Dean.
Thank you.
All right, Dean, call the roll.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion is carried. Now we have approval of amendment to superintendent goals for 2016, 2017, to add a sixth goal that Martha would help to ensure a smooth transition of leadership for the incoming superintendent.
I move to approve the amendment to the superintendent's goals for 2016, 2017, to include a sixth goal, ensure a smooth transition of leadership for the incoming superintendent.
Scott, second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, Dean?
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carried. And now we have approval of a new job description for preschool monitor position. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the newly established job description for the preschool monitor position.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
This is a new position?
This is a new position. It's for about two hours a day to cover a period at a preschool in one of our schools that does not meet state requirements currently. Because we have to have a certain number of adults and a certain number of students and the adults need to have a lunch break. It's the only way we could figure out to solve the problem and stay within the state guidelines.
This is a creative way to-
It is creative.
-meet our goals.
And you found, hopefully we'll find somebody with that.
They believe that they can find somebody to come to work for two hours a day.
And we pay them how much for that?
I don't remember. $10 an hour or something.
I hope it works.
Looking for a job?
No.
All right, Dean, you want to call the roll?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we have approval to request allowable growth for dropout prevention. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the request for $3,082,584. Whatever that number is.
$48.
Forty-eight. For the modified allowable growth for dropout prevention.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent, any discussion? All right, Dean?
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we have approval of revised request for modified supplemental amount for open enrollment out, LEP and increased enrollment. Is there a motion?
There is one minor thing, this is why I left a little bit ago. The open enrollment should be 871, that's not open enrollment out. And the increased enrollment out is the 39965. So whomever makes the motion, just please keep that in mind.
Say that again.
The open enrollment and the increased enrollment numbers are switched around.
Okay, I'll step on the limb. And I move to approve the revised request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified supplemental amount for open enrollment, $39,965.20.
Open enrollment out.
Limited English proficiency, LEP of $244,688.40. And increased enrollment of $871,794.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those?
I might say, this is the second time we've brought this to you. I got a call last week from the state saying, oh, since you guys approved it, you had a little bit more money. So if you want it, you have to have your board reapprove it. It was 600 bucks. So we said, okay. Martha didn't want to do it, but I talked her into it.
He's wearing his green shirt.
Any dollar counts.
That's right. That's right.
I'm trying to see why we have the numbers. I'm looking at your report, sir.
Was it flipped around? Did I flip that around?
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, Dean, go ahead and call.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. And now we are up to approval of physical education waiver. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the request to the Iowa Department of Education for a Chapter 12 exemption requiring year-long physical education in grades nine through 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This for the people in the audience is because we have a trimester schedule?
We do this every year because-
Dr. Vorthman?
Dr. Vorthman tells us we should.
The whole audience, the audience at home can hear.
What we put in the waivers, we ask for an exemption from offering PE every day. So we can offer it for a trimester instead of a semester. So we offer it every day for a trimester, meet the same requirement.
So students have the choice to take PE for one trimester-
Correct.
...and something else in place of PE for the other two trimesters. But they may choose to take PE more than once.
That is correct, as an elective.
And when they take it, it's every day?
Correct. Take it every day for 70 minutes for 12 weeks.
So the current law in Iowa is they only have to do it once a week, don't they?
Correct, they have to take it all year.
PE.
For one day a week, yeah.
Ask your question, because he didn't answer the question you asked.
The current law in Iowa, without a waiver, is every student supposed to take one hour of PE a week?
The way that the Chapter 12 is written is they have to take PE for 1/8 of their instruction for a year.
But my argument is, under our system, they're getting more physical activity than you do under the current state law.
No.
60 days?
That's not true. They would get 1/8 of the school day. So in a typical 50-minute class period, times every day for a semester, or two semesters, whatever they choose. But the requirement is that they have at least a semester of PE.
It's not one hour a week, I think it's one hour a day.
No, one hour per day. 1/8 of the schedule.
Per day. I think that that's the difference between what I heard you ask and what I heard him answer.
We've received this waiver for, I believe since we went to trimesters. And I had individual conversations with Amy Williamson, who approves this waiver. She is supportive of us continuing to do this as it increases opportunities for kids, so.
To take other things to fill their schedule.
That is correct.
Correct. Not because we-
Correct. Not because we don't want them to be here every trimester.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. So we have a motion, a second. Dean, call the vote.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. And now we have a motion to-
We now have a motion that's blank.
A board member.
And I have something for whomever fills in the blank to sign, but none of you volunteered.
Okay, I'll do it.
Can you provide a little explanation?
Okay, yeah, we can talk about this. So what we have is the, we need to appoint a board member to Potomac County Assessors Conference Board.
Who has served on it?
I have served on it for the past five years. I'm actually happy to continue doing that.
Oh, perfect.
Because it really only requires, it only requires two meetings a year. Now, one of those meetings will always fall on a board meeting, or has always traditionally fallen on a board meeting, and one of those, sometimes we'll have work sessions where we end up running into them just a tiny bit. But generally, their, their boards are, their board meetings are very short, and the public doesn't seem to care. But they're very short meetings, and they-
Looks really good on a resume.
It does. I don't know about that. But essentially, all of the taxing or levying authorities within the Potomac County are there, so it's every town and school district-
School districts.
-has a representative on this board. And about probably a quarter of those come, or maybe less. I don't know. It's not many. Again, so if you want to do that.
Basically to approve the assessors-
Budget.
Yeah, you approve their budget, and then there are some-
Then you review some of the dates for appeal.
Theoretically, you could hear, I mean, you could actually be hearing some things, and, but that hasn't happened in many years. Now, they will be in, finishing in seventeen with a three-year process of reassessing all of the commercial properties within the county. So there may be some action then, but that would probably be in 2018. So there's plenty of time. But, so is there a motion to appoint any board member to the Pot County, Potomac County Assessors Conference Board?
I move to appoint Troy Arthur as the official representative of the Council Bluff Community School District to serve on the Potomac County Assessors Conference Board for the next term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I do, willing to do it.
I'm perfectly fine, but if someone else would like to, we could, we could not approve me.
Fine with me.
Vote for Susan.
It doesn't matter. I can do it if you're not willing to, or you can continue to do that.
Really, I certainly can.
Be fine.
So, Dean, call the roll here, and whatever happens, happens.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. Okay, now we have approval of agreement with Behringer, Seacio, Danell, Mayberry, Inc. for the Kern Middle School Building Exterior Envelope Project. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the agreement with B C D M for the Kern Middle School Building envelope project.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Just for a second. Is there any discussion on this? And if there is none, Dean?
Mr. Gazire?
Yes, sir.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion to approve B C D M for the Kern Project carries. And now we are to approve all the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? And Dean, go ahead and-
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. LaFerla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and the motion carries. And with that, we are adjourned.